Can you hear me now? Good evening, welcome to the March 6th special session, special day, special time, special location in anticipation of the snow that we know is going to be expected to be falling in the coming hours. This meeting is called to order. We'll begin with the pledge.
Let the leaders of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Herrera.
Present.
Trustee Codman.
Present.
Trustee Bazemore.
Present.
And Mayor Garrity.
Present.
Do we have any mayors and trustees announcements?
Just open by saying thank you so much to everyone who worked tirelessly through this weekend, particularly our first responders in our Public Works Office Department, who really coordinated very well. And obviously, it's difficult when folks are without power, or when folks have all kinds of crazy stuff happening in their neighborhoods and in their homes. And we appreciate everyone working together to make the best of a tough situation. And actually, Austin is very fortunate, particularly in comparison to some of our neighbors who are looking at having a bunch of snowfall without power too. And we are, most, most all of us in Austin are fortunate to have our power back on. So, we're very grateful for that. And we are ready for the snow emergency, which just took effect a little while ago this evening, which means that there are a number of roadways where typically you would be permitted to park overnight, but during the snow emergency, you are not permitted to park overnight. And if you have not looked at that list, it's available on the Village website. It tends to be many of the main roadways that are passages for particularly our first responder vehicles for emergencies and to keep the community moving smoothly even during the storm. And we're very pleased that at least on those roads, we'll get the roadways plowed curb to curb, and that'll be very helpful during the aftermath of the storm. It is certainly an inconvenience during the storm for folks who have to park elsewhere. And it's always a tricky decision how to balance when we're going to have the inconvenience, how long the inconvenience will be. And it'll be hopefully a short-term inconvenience as we get through the initial snowfall. Others have interesting, fun things to tell us?
I do.
Please.
So, there'll be fun on Thursday night at the Austin Elks Lodge with our third installment of Organ Groove Thursdays. Paul Connors and John Doty will be joined by a guitar player on Thursday night, starting at 7:00, come after work, have a drink. You can come early at 6:00, that's when the bar opens at the lodge, and you'll be our guest to some great music on Thursday night. And then, on Saturday night, it's the second Saturday, and that means more jazz at the lodge. Mark Minkler, Jay Azalina, and Mark Ferber will start at 7:30. There's also, we're also doing a little $10 dinner at 6:00. If you want to have dinner and music, please come by. $10 at the door also goes to the musicians. So, that's Saturday night, 7:30, Elks Lodge, Mark Minkler, Jay Azalina, Jay Ferber, more jazz in Austin. Thanks.
Just want to acknowledge that this is Women's History Month. So, one of my favorite women in history is Shirley Chisholm. She was one of the first elected black African-American women congresswoman, elected to the 12th district. My favorite quote personally is, "If they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair." So, always just remember that.
I like that.
That's a good one. Sir?
Good evening, everyone. I also want to echo what Mayor Garrity stated earlier. Our team has been out nonstop since the storm, even before on, should I say, Thursday, Friday through the weekend. So, thank you so much. That includes our personnel, police, fire, EMS, and all those that make that possible. I want to remind everyone that the county itself is under a state of emergency, and it will remain under a state of emergency because we still have 9,000 residents countywide without power. And I'm, and even still here in Austin. So, I do really ask everyone to please pay attention to what the Village and the police and fire, EMS, and, you know, all our services are asking us to do. We're not doing this to make your day any difficult tomorrow. It's really, you know, to assure that we could actually clean our streets, our sidewalks, make the roads passable, and also, God forbid, we have an emergency and we had to respond, which we usually do, as you heard our sirens, nonstop on Friday. It's really important that you aren't out there unless you have to be. And the next piece, I hate to have to announce this, but price gouging when it comes to gas and services. If that happens to you throughout the Village or anywhere in the county, please call 211 if you see or you're, or you hear any speculation. And it really could be any store, or gas station, or place. And because we're going to be getting eight-plus inches of snow, it keeps changing, but we're getting a lot of snow, I'm very happy that our emergency winter shelter is open, and the estimated 15 homeless people that I have been attending will be able to have shelters tomorrow night. And for those that are watching, if you know anyone who needs shelter, have them go to Open Door Family Medical Center right on Main Street at 9:00 PM tomorrow, probably a little earlier. I'm going to try to stop by there and see if I could help. If you guys want to join, please feel free. But all you have to do is stop by at 9:00 PM. A staff person will meet you there. They'll take you to the host place where you get a warm meal. There's usually entertainment, something for you to do there, a warm place to sleep. And then, in the morning, you'll be, you know, you'll be let go, and you can go as you please, but you'll also be fed a warm breakfast and a bagged lunch. So, it's great that even though a lot of us are able to stay home tomorrow or work from home, we keep in mind those that don't have a home and how blessed we are to have a shelter open that, you know, our residents and our neighbors who are homeless can actually go to. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Debbie, while we're talking about storm prep and things going on, I do have one more fun thing. But while we're talking about storm prep, do you want to let folks know about the Warming Center and what's going to be happening at the Community Center tomorrow?
We are going to be opening the Community Center for anyone who needs to get out of the cold or the snow. Maybe you're still without power and you need to charge your cellphones. But we will be open from 9:00 in the morning until 9:00 at night. It's just limited staffing, so, you know, the rec center is open, the rec room, the gym will be open for some, you know, makeshift basketball or whatever. So, the pool is not open, but, you know, we're happy to have people that need a place to go to be a part of that. So, we're going to keep that open for as long as people in our community are without power. So, my last report was in Austin themselves was 186 families without power. So, we'll stay open and be there for you. Thank you.
I have one fun thing, and then we can get down to our not-too-lengthy agenda, but there is some important stuff to take care of. Next Thursday at 6:30, please join us at the Austin Public Library for this month's installment of the Documentary Discussion Series and picking up on the comment that Trustee Bazemore made. It is Women's History Month, and the film is called "The Empowerment Project." It's a group of female filmmakers who went on a road trip and help us just celebrate and learn about some of ordinary women doing extraordinary things is the tagline. And we have some really extraordinary women on the panel who have done some, had some fascinating careers excelling in male-dominated fields. And so, I hope you'll join us next Thursday, the 15th, at the Austin Public Library. The program begins at 6:30. It looks like we might even be able to begin with some live music from one of our panelists, who is herself a jazz trumpet player. And there aren't too many women who excel at her level as a jazz trumpet player in the world. So, we'll hopefully get to enjoy some of her work life coming here to our Documentary Discussion Series.
Madam Mayor, might I piggyback on Trustee Herrera's comment with price gouging? If there's anyone who encounters a taxi company or driver that is gouging, please call me immediately.
Thank you.
Because we will not allow that. Make sure that you get the cab number and, if possible, the driver's name.
And then, they call your office at what number?
762-8428.
Thank you. And we have been joined by Trustee Levin. All right. Perfect timing. Did you have any announcements? You can sneak one in.
Okay.
We've been all over. Madam Clerk.
Village matter, did you have any further announcements?
No, I really think the word of the day is storm, storm recovery, and storm preparation. It's great for me to have gone through this very first storm in a major way with the Village. And our crews are pretty amazing, they really are. They work very well together. We had an operation, an operation management meeting, and everyone, it works like a charm. And I just think our community should know that, so that whenever help is needed, they call the right person, they get the right person, they get the help immediately. One thing I do want to mention is if you are still without power, or if you find yourself having your power go out during this next storm, it's really important that you go on the ConEd website through your phone or some way to get to them to register that your individual home needs to be registered for lack of power. So, they do have larger grids, but individuals that need service are going to need to register that individually, and it's really important that you remember that. So, stay indoors if you don't need to travel, and we will be here to serve you and plow your streets and get you on your way the next day. So, thank you. That's about it. Thank you.
Corporation Council, Sturica-Hunt.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Just on a personal note, thanks to the Police Department. For those of us in the town outside, and particularly in my neighborhood, who just got their power back late last night, it was nice to have the police coming around frequently to make sure that the houses were well-protected because it was really, really dark. And as someone who stayed overnight, really, really cold. But they did mark out the trees appropriately, at least we were able to see where we were not supposed to walk. And I do want to thank the police and everyone else who was involved with that because it was a long couple of nights, but we managed to get through it. And now, we're going to my daughter's house and picking up the food that we dropped off a few days ago. She seems very jealous about that because she thought she would not have to shop for a few days. But such is life. Onto other things. And this is sort of an announcement relating to parking generally. If you find yourself without a place to park, and that often happens in this village, but you see a fire lane and think that you can park in that fire lane, or someone tells you that it's okay to park in that fire lane, do not park in the fire lane. We had a few incidents recently of folks parking in the fire lane in front of the recreation center. Unfortunately, it was at a time where there actually was a fire call. It was not a serious fire call, but I was getting calls from many people saying, "Well, you know, I thought I could park there." Well, again, regardless of who tells you, it is a fire lane, it is a violation, not only of the Village Code, but actually of state law, so don't park in a fire lane. I'm asking you just not to do that because if the police have to go, if the fire folks have to go through your car in order to get to a building, they will go through your car to do that. And just a brief announcement, Mayor, I know at next week's work session on the 14th, we have a number of discussions on various issues that have been coming up. There have been issues with regard to towing, issues with regard to registration of certain businesses, particularly certain massage parlors. So, I will have information for the board and for the public on that next week. And if anyone has any questions on that during the week, they can feel free to get in touch with me at 941-3554. But we'll have more details on that as we go into next week's session. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have some very, very heavy work sessions ahead of us. So, if the item that you are most interested in and eager to see us discuss isn't on the very next one, there'll be another one in two weeks, and there'll be another one in two weeks. We're doing our best to address as many issues as we can. And sometimes, something that is very important gets pushed off only because there's something else that's time-sensitive. Like, we've got that doc grant that has a time sensitivity. It's not that the doc grant is the very most important thing that's happening in Austin, but there's dates and deadlines for F or V submission. So, we're doing our best to get everything covered in a timely fashion. Madam Clerk.
Okay. Well, Police Chief Sylvester is not with us this evening, so we'll move on to organizational announcements. Is there anyone who has an organizational announcement? Not seeing any. Is anyone like to address the board on any of the Village Board resolutions? We'll move on to resolutions. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Austin hereby approves the minutes of the February 21st, 2018 regular meeting as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On the board, Madam Clerk.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolved the Board of Trustees of the Village of Austin hereby approves the minutes of the February 28th, 2018 special meeting as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. On the board, Madam Clerk.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolved the Board of Trustees of the Village of Austin hereby approves the voucher detail report dated March 7th. That should be March 6th. 2018 and the amount of $428,762.52. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On the board, sir?
Just want to note that the, about $110,000 of the disbursement is from the water fund. And, but that's a billing that actually goes back to November. New York City Water kind of needs to send their bill sooner to us, so I'm hoping that they're going to do that and discuss that with Treasurer Warren, just, or, you know, maybe talk to Andy, I don't know. Maybe we can encourage the New York City Water Department. I'm sure they know how much we have to pay, but, you know, the good news is, and I think Andy mentioned it at one of his last meetings, that we're now, the majority of our water is now coming from our own reservoir. So, that's the good news. But that's the reason for kind of a larger dollar amount for this disbursement.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolved the Board of Trustees of the Village of Austin pursuant to the applicable provision of civil service law and the unconsolidated laws of New York State hereby appoints Anthony Olivero to the position of Police Sergeant in the Village of Austin from Eligible List Number 71-198 effective March 12, 2018, and an annual salary of $120,876. This appointment is subject to a probationary period of not less than 12 nor more than 52 weeks. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Well, the actual swearing-in, we're going to hold off for a couple of weeks so that he can have the, be down in the courthouse, and all of his friends and family can be present, and there's a little more pomp and circumstance, but we did want to move this forward. Again, this is sort of a date paperwork thing, and I know he's going to come to your office to formalize it. But the ceremonial portion of it will be in two weeks. And we really look forward to that promotion. I'm very pleased about this promotion. He's, I think he's going to be a real asset in the, as a sergeant in the department. Does anybody else want to comment on Mr. Olivero? All right. Madam Clerk.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Whereas pursuant to Chapters 101-171 of the Code of the Village of Austin, the authorized representative of the business Six Degrees of Separation Restaurant and Brewery LLC, 35 Main Street, has made an application to the Village Clerk as Licensing Officer for a cabaret license for live and recorded music. And whereas pursuant to Section 103 and 105 of the Code, the Village Clerk has caused an investigation into said application and referred the same to the Board of Trustees for final approval. Now, therefore, be it resolved that pursuant to the Code, the Board of Trustees hereby approves a cabaret license for Six Degrees of Separation Restaurant and Brewery LLC for 2018 as follows. Six Degrees of Separation Restaurant and Brewery LLC, days Sunday through Saturday, type of music, live music, hours Sunday through Saturday, 12:00 PM until 11:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
What is with the hours? This is, it didn't say this at one point. I thought, I thought they...
Originally, we actually had hours that went till 2:00 AM.
Right.
But I spoke to Mr. Ryan, and ordinarily, the music will end between 10:00 and 11:00 PM. So, that's why. And he's also going to start serving lunch, serving lunch with music. So, that's why he asked for the afternoon hour as well.
Yeah, I'm fine with the afternoon hour. It'd be lovely to have somebody playing music during lunch. I certainly don't want to discourage that. I just don't, I was just surprised that it's a bar. They, I mean, if it says 11:00, then at 11:30, if he's making noise and somebody complains, there's no music.
What he said to me is that he cuts the music off at 10:00. I said, "Well, why don't we at least make it to 11:00 in the event that you have something going on?" He said he appreciated that, but he was very clear that it would not be going any later than that, so...
Okay. All right. Well, I'm not going to force the man to play music later. It's just unusual. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolved that upon the recommendation of the Fire Chief, Dennis Drogen of Austin, New York, was elected an active member of Independent Host Company Number Six for interior firefighting at their regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On the board, Madam Clerk.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolved that upon the recommendation of the Fire Chief, Scott DePillo of Austin, New York, was elected an active member of Independent Host Company Number Six for interior firefighting at their regular meeting. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. On the board, Madam Clerk.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolved that upon the recommendation of the Fire Chief, Megan Carlson of Austin, New York, was elected an active member of Senate Hook and Ladder Company Number One for interior firefighting at their regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. On the board, Madam Clerk.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolved that upon the recommendation of the Fire Chief, Jose Cotto of Austin, New York, was elected an active member of Austin Fire Police and Emergency Squad for interior firefighting at their regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. On the board, Madam Clerk.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have any continuing business of the board?
We do.
We do. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mary Ann. This is a continuation of our earlier discussion regarding the process for ETPA, specifically with regard to the housing vacancy survey, which is a necessary prerequisite in order to make a determination if there is a vacancy rate below 5% because that is the number that is necessary. Anything above 5%, you cannot have an emergency declaration. When we left off last time, the discussion, or the request that I had made, was to allow me to just review some cases and some publications on the specifics of the housing survey in terms of what needs to be done and what the survey can involve. And unfortunately, New York does not provide a great deal of information on that, certainly either by statute or by regulation. But what I can tell you from what the courts have effectively said is that a complete survey of all housing units within a municipality is not required. And the key thing is that the municipality must use a, what they would call a common-sense approach, to conduct a good-faith study using precise data, and that data must be organized and presented in a coherent form. There is nothing which precludes the board from using for a housing survey units, six units or more, that were completed prior to January 1, 1974, which is the date that is set forth in the unconsolidated laws for the Emergency Tenant Protection Act. Now, within that, the board can look at various classes of units, which are basically go by size or by location, and can use that as a determining factor as to whether they want to have an overall emergency declaration depending upon what your vacancy numbers are, or based upon a particular class, such as 50 units or greater, 20 to 50 units in that sense. Those were, those are issues, and those are things that will have to be looked at by the entity that will ultimately do the housing survey. The village should be prepared in any survey to respond to any likely questions that would be raised by folks who may well be in opposition to the presentation in the survey in terms of how the 5% figure is calculated. But again, the key is the ability to have the precise data, and again, it does not require a complete survey, and that it is presented in a form that can demonstrate why the board, if it deems it necessary, issues an emergency declaration or finds that in fact there is no, it is above 5% and they, that an emergency declaration is not required. But one of the questions that I had before last week's, before the last discussion, and can now indicate to the board, is that it is not necessary for the board to look at all housing units within the village, both pre and post 1174. They can certainly go, completed prior to 1174 and six units and up. And then, the entity that's doing it can break that down by classes, and that can provide the board with additional information in reviewing the numbers and then making the determination based upon those numbers if it is necessary to declare the emergency and go forward with the enactment. So, the next step would be to issue out an RFP so that there could then be, and see what, we can get the housing survey started based upon the parameters that the village would set with regard to those parameters, provide the information to the, to that entity. There are various exceptions to ETPA. The one that comes immediately to mind are charitable institutions, do not count with regard to units. It would probably be best to get a gross number in terms of what all the units are and what the vacancy is, and then take out those particular units that are subject to the exemptions so that you could then know exactly what your vacancy rate is. But again, how it's done really rests with the municipality, but it just has to be done in a way that, as the court has said, is a good-faith study using the data that is presented. So, part of it will be getting a list of units from the assessor and making sure that that list is accurate and complete. We may also want to include in the list, in the request, the rents that are charged for those units that in fact are vacant, to get an idea of basically where these rents come in. Are we looking at high rents? Are we looking at low rents? And also, something that has to be determined is the period of time that you're looking for in terms of vacancy. Should it be a snapshot of a day? Should it be a couple of weeks? Should it be one or two months? This way to allow a broader picture to determine exactly what your vacancy numbers are. If you do it perhaps at the end of the month, you may find a lot of people moving out, which means you may have a higher vacancy number than you might have at another time in the month. So, a broader period of time may well be a better reflection of what your, what your numbers can be. That's something that would be discussed with the group that actually does the calculations and goes out and does that in terms of whatever numbers that they have. But those are, those are things, you know, for the board to look at because ultimately, the instructions that are provided will be coming, you know, through discussions with this board in terms of setting that up. So, that's where we are on that.
Okay. So, from the last time that we had this conversation, what was needed was, you know, we had somewhat of a consensus about doing six or more units built before, built before January 1, 1974. And now that we have that cleared, I guess the next directive is to have our planning department actually prepare the RFP. So, how soon could that, can that be done?
Probably next week.
Okay.
I'd like to just go on record that I'm in disagreement with, it's a 3-2 vote, I think it was. So, I think. So, I'm in disagreement with my colleagues.
It was actually a work session, so there was never any forum.
So, there's no vote. So, I'm in disagreement with this. I believe that it doesn't actually pass. Your comment is that we do not have to do a complete. It doesn't mean that that's the appropriate way to do this. If the idea of doing a study is to see what available units are vacant or occupied in a village like ours that has significant numbers of rentals, condos, co-ops, all of which are also part of...
Correct.
Units that could be rented, built over a number of decades, before and after 1974, I believe that anybody looking at this, as you stated, you know, you're only giving directional opinion based on what you looked at. But in my opinion, it doesn't make sense not to look at a greater number of units than just those pre-1974. I think that we need to extend it to a larger set to get a real empirical study. I do take into account the timing issue because a snapshot of one day, 30 days, 90, I don't actually know what the right number is. I'm sure there isn't really a great direction on that either because it seems very... I'm not sure there's great direction, either in law or in practice, about what the right number of days or weeks or months or seasons exists for this, but I guess we'll have to come up with that.
The only, the only two cases I came across where they actually mentioned that, they did it between two to three months.
So, they probably were trying to figure out a quarter, like a fiscal quarter of some sort. Because if we do it too narrow of a scope, it'll end up in court, I would assume, costing the taxpayers yet more money and fighting something that we didn't take enough... the taxpayers yet more money and fighting something that we didn't take enough precaution to say that this is empirical, that we looked at all available units. I don't think we could do 100%. I don't think that would be a reasonable test, but I think looking only at units pre-1974 is also, doesn't pass for me, a reasonable test or precise data to look at all of the available rentals. Because the idea here is, this is not about income, it's not about units being generated. That isn't what ETPA is. It's about a time element and availability of units to renters at a given point in time. And so leaving out a large block of available units that may be vacant and may be available, I think, does not give precise data. I don't think it's empirically done correctly. I think it's tainted from the get-go because the outbox is only as good as the inbox, and we're limiting the inbox. So I could be voted over, that's fine, but I do want to go on record saying that I believe that the data collection here is not, neither precise in looking only at units of, before 1974, nor is it enough data to draw what I believe would be an accurate statement on the available units in our inventory that includes condos, co-ops, and rentals, regardless of the market values of any of them. Arguably, when I looked at co-ops, off of a major part of our village, it is actually less expensive to rent co-ops in this village than it is to rent many of the units in this village. We have a tremendous inventory of affordable units in this village. It was proven empirically by Dworka's study, the percentage of units available for renting is very high proportion to housing, to single homes, et cetera. We have lots of co-ops and lots of sublets. I'd like to expand it beyond that 1974 cutoff. So that's my opinion about it, that the study should be wider than looking at just pre-1974. And I just wanted to sort of give my reasoning for it. Thanks.
I'll just say, that was my suggestion the last time we discussed it, and so I still think that it would be wise. I also think that it's pretty darn likely that some private entity is going to undertake their own study, and if they're wise, they'll use the same parameters that we did. Other than that, they'll probably do all of the units to have a full picture of what's going on, so we'll probably get those numbers anyway, if I had to guess, because I don't think, I don't think this is going to go unchallenged in one form or another. And what's most important from a municipal perspective, regardless of how I feel about whether or not we should enable ETPA, is that the village does the very best study that is going to hold up to challenges in court. That's the best way for the municipality to handle itself, and I know that, I have faith in Stewart's interpretation and understanding of what's been recommended, although I do agree that, for a host of other reasons, there's benefits to doing a more comprehensive inventory.
I don't want to cut you off, so you
It's fine.
I forgot to ask something. I sort of went blank in the middle there because I meant to ask something. I couldn't read my handwriting, I'm sorry. You added in rental rates. Can you just tell me again why you think that's important? It seemed like that was sort of an added at the end here.
I thought that one of the concerns might well be, is that if you found that rental, that the vacancies were in high rental units, not necessarily in your affordable range, that might have an important impact as to whether or not, even if the, even if the number is below 5%, that the board may want to think as to whether or not that still qualifies as an emergency within whatever, you know, whatever parameters you are. So if you find out that you have a vast number of vacancies, but these are, you know, whatever the rental is, but it's, but it's on the higher tier, I thought that it would provide for a fuller explanation of where those, one, where the rentals are, but also in terms of who might be renting those particular units and what the rental availability is of those units. Because I don't think that was something that was necessarily looked at before, but I think it is something that at least should be considered. It's, again, it's not a parameter that comes up in these particular cases, but it's certainly a parameter that can be looked at. And just, you know, just to go back, Trust 11, to the point you were making, the cases are unfortunately all over the place. So there are certainly cases where the, what has been done was a view of the entire, the entire spectrum, and in fact, where those have, where those have come to the court, the court has found that that's appropriate. One of the reasons that the court gives is that the concern was that it would create a skewed number, that if you only took it from a particular period and you are not considering anything you built after 1-174, you may well find that you have a large number of vacancies in post-1-174. So that's, that might create an unfair picture. It's just in terms of how you do the study, and the key is, it is something the village is going to do, it is something that is likely to be subject to challenge, and if it goes to challenge, you have to be able to not only justify what you've done, but answer whatever challenges are raised by your opposition. A fuller report may well resolve that, but I just wanted to let the board know that in terms of where it comes down, the courts basically come down on either way.
So I need to just ask you because it's so tacked at the end that I sort of have to
Go ahead.
Pomp my eye. So the way the law is written, I mean, it's over four decades, so I understand that things happen and change and you're trying to cover, but the actual cost in the rental isn't actually a part of the stated laws, you stated it up front in your paragraph. So that 5%, the way it's written, doesn't matter what the rental is on that unit.
It's a straight vacancy. It has nothing to do with numbers.
So the first part of your write-up was really about that law, but that last sentence was more of, while you're doing this, I don't want to put words in your mouth, you should be looking at it because if you're trying to understand the story, like what is going on in your village, it is my recommendation that you look at it because I think you'll get a fuller picture if there's a discrepancy.
I would agree, I agree with that.
Is that correct?
Yes. And because, at least in my view, even if it's under 5% as a vacancy rate, the board is not obligated or required to declare an emergency. The converse is not the case. If in fact it goes above 5%, that emergency ends at that point. The board cannot continue it.
Oh, okay.
So, so the thought is that if it's under 5%, the board can still look at other factors to make a determination, is there in fact a reason to declare an emergency? So that's, that's why I put that in.
Got it.
But you are correct that the number is not, the actual rent is not part of it. It's just a straight 5%.
Right. Got it. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Got it.
Thank you. While I hear and see the concern for any litigation on the matter, I mean, if you look at the past six years in the village, there's a lot of stuff people could potentially sue us for that could be questioned. That's government in general. You know, the term sue happy is everywhere, especially in government. It's your right, people do it. And with that being said though, Stewart, this is a question directly for you.
Sure.
Does intention, should an intention matter? So like, as I stated at the last meeting, I was focusing at the subject at hand, right? So because we were so troubled and questioned the process last year, and we're doing a new vacancy study with hopefully a vendor that everyone on this board and this administration agrees with, that's not pro against, but you know, can't find the word.
Objective.
Yeah. Objective person or firm. For these, for the purposes of finding an answer as to whether we have a housing emergency, I wouldn't see why the intention of focusing on the ones that would qualify under a program that we're considering for the potential declaration of a potential program. I just don't see how that is, how that is wrong or, because the question at hand, the determination at hand, is for us to have the information to come up with the ability to declare whether we have a housing emergency or we don't based off of the numbers. So to me, it would make sense to focus on the buildings that would only qualify for ETPA.
I understand what you're saying. I'll give you the lawyer's perspective. I was always taught, you plan for your appeal because what's, you can always expect that someone's going to take an appeal. So in this case, it's like planning for an Article 78. So how do you defend against that? So you want to have, you want to have the best, in this case, best possible study. That's not to say that you can't have the best possible study of six and more units completed prior to 1-174, and you put in all, and you do your methodology correctly. I always do it from a, you just got to be prepared, you know, do it the Boy Scout way, make sure everything is ready. And if someone were to come in with a study that looked at the village as a whole, and that study came in with a number in excess of 5%, and our study, and the village's study of the pre-1-174 was under 5%, you've got, you then have an apples-to-orange comparison, but you still have to indicate to the court why your study is proper and why it was done correctly. You are correct that at the end of the day, you can only declare an emergency as to units six or greater completed prior to 1-174. That's a given. That's all the statute allows you to do, except what it does allow you to do is then to break up into classes those groups that you want to declare an emergency for. How you do the study and what you put into the study is ultimately the village's decision in terms of where it comes from. I think if you, to the extent that you would have greater knowledge of your overall vacancies by looking at all of your units, that I think is a given because you're just going to have that there, which you don't have otherwise. In terms of how the court will come out with the, how the court would ultimately decide, again, the village is going to have to demonstrate that it has used proper calculations and that it's presented it properly, it was done on a good faith basis, and it was not done to sort of, let's say, rig the system to come in that you knew it's going to come in below 5, so this is the way, you know, we're sort of skewing our numbers. That was what happened in one of the cases where it was clear that the way it was being done was effectively that the numbers were going to come in under 5%. And the courts don't want you to do that.
So when White Plains included public housing and they were sued, what was the outcome of that?
That was allowed.
That was allowed.
That was allowed. That was allowed.
All right, so, and I believe, and
But when Long Beach, when Long Beach used improper calculations and were faced with a report from a property owner who showed that it was above 5%, it was thrown out. So it, I'm just, and that was an appellate decision, so I just, just
And so what was the issue with Long Beach? How did they, what did they do?
What happened in the Long Beach case, and it's, it's 2007, essentially, what happened there was, I'll just read it, "The plaintiffs established as a matter of law that the vacancy rate for residential buildings with 100 or more units exceeded 5% from January 2003 to May 2003." And then the court went through what the city did, and they found that the city's report, which concluded that the rate never exceeded 5%, failed to meet the standard, which is the standard I mentioned before of a good faith study and using precise data. And so they basically found that the Long Beach, the municipality's study was improper, particularly when compared to the study that was provided by the unit, by the property owners. And what they did is they essentially, they threw it out. They said that the declaration of the emergency was improper, and that there was no emergency, and that therefore these units were entitled to, to go to basically no longer be rent-stabilized. So
Essentially, in that case, the municipality said, okay, we're looking at 100 or more units, whatever it is, and then the residents said, okay, I'm going to take the same exact study that you did, and they went through their, the same properties, I would imagine, and then they found that there wasn't a vacancy rate of more than, or below 5% essentially.
They, there was
So it's the same exact study?
I can't tell you, was it the same exact study, but they, but basically, the court found that the city's report, because it was the city that was pursuing it, that the city's report was insufficient and was, and did not warrant a finding of a 5% or less vacancy rate. That's what they found.
So I think, I just, there's so much we could delve into here in parsing the information, and it's really, it's kind of up to you, John, because I think Omar and Quantel have made it pretty clear that they would like, unless this conversation has changed your mind, you would like six units and up, pre-1-174, and you're not interested in finding out what the rent rolls are that are associated with this?
Not necessarily. I mean, the rent rules have, I mean, I don't, I don't know if that has to be discussed right now as far as the RFP is concerned, but as far as the RFP is concerned, I want to look at six or more units built before 1974
Okay.
Because that's what we were talking about.
So the, it sounds like the Long Beach thing, it was an insufficient study. We're talking about doing a study that is perfectly, it's exactly what all of the case law has led us to understand. The law itself is, is not terribly specific, but there have been in the last 40 years a number of, handful of cases anyway, that have clarified what the information is that's needed, and we're going to do a study that, that meets the standards, that it should stand up to anything. Will it be questioned? Of course it's going to be questioned. We know it's going to be questioned by the landlords, they've made no secret of that. Would it be beneficial to have a more comprehensive study beyond what is necessary for the ETPA-eligible question? I think so. We could think so, but it's not necessary. So unless, unless somebody else wants to join us in saying, let's make this a more comprehensive study, then let's move forward with the RFP. John, do you want to?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say this, that, that, you know, I would say, I mean, I certainly agree with Omar in that, you know, the only affected units by ETPA are the ones that are built before January 1st of 1974, so I feel that that is the universe of units that need to be analyzed to check and check as far as a vacancy rate is concerned. And the other thing I might add is that, you know, when you talk about ETPA and what it means, what we're talking about is rent stabilization. We're talking about putting something into place in which people are going to have an opportunity to, to be able to have home security. I mean, that's, that's what this is really about. And this isn't affordable housing, okay? This is low-income housing. This is, this is income for the people that are what I call the donut hole. These are the people that are in very tight margins in their life, they're on the very edge of maybe even sliding into a difficult situation, okay? And these are, these are families and people that have a home and they want to have home security. And that's what this is all about. You know, we have a huge institutional failure, starting with federal government, state government, county government. We have an opportunity, we have to do this. This is something that only we can do here in this village. And I will not apologize for giving people home security, and that's what this is about. Now, I feel very strongly that we need to do a good study, and we need to put together an RFP that's solid and tight, and I want to make sure that the parameters of the RFP are for firms that have good methodology and know what they're doing and have done these types of studies before. I want to make sure that they've got good methodology and they're going to do the right thing. My feeling is that a study between two and three weeks is probably acceptable, and that's, that's the length of the study that I would like to see done. I, you know, I respectfully
Two to three months was what the case law had suggested.
Well, that was, that was something that was challenged, right? I mean, I doubt that when Spring Valley did their, you know, when Spring Valley did their initial vacancy rate, this is what it was, you know, you got a letter, and if you don't return it back, we're going to take you as that meaning that, you know, you have, you have no apartments available. I mean, I think if you were to look at every case study, every municipality has done it differently, whether they've done two or three months.
I think part of this will also depend upon the entity that's ultimately retained because presumably they may well have done vacancy studies and will want to know what their methodology, or at least find out what they think, because there may, it may well be different ways, ways to do it. But two to three months is what I've seen in cases. That does not mean that that is the be-all, end-all. I don't, I don't want, but I certainly think you need more than just a day or two because it just seems that that may well skew things.
Devin, did you?
And I just want to clarify, we didn't ask Kevin Darker to do an actual vacancy rate in our study, and from the data that he pulled, he was able to use census numbers to say that we have a overcrowding housing issue, but as far as the level of affordability in this community, that's not what our, our housing study's shown. We hired him to give us a list of recommendations, but definitely not to the extent of whether housing here in Austin is affordable or not affordable.
His study actually did show it, and this didn't even make the top five list. It's not even in the top five in the sequences that he wants to approach. He was hired for a whole skew of reasons. In fact, you recommended he be hired. ETPA didn't even make the top five. ETPA didn't even make the top five list for him, and he was very adamant in his public appearances that there's a sequence to what should be done in his recommendation. So...
Yeah, sequence.
We can all, we can all argue about it. It's public information. It's on the website. Everybody could look it up. We could all keep talking about, but it's public. Everybody can look it up. We don't need to have that discussion.
So what I'm hearing...
Well, we could have a discussion. I mean, it's a work session.
No, you can have a discussion, but I'm just saying, we can go on and on. I mean...
Well, no, 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 hold on.
You'll be fine with me.
If we have to go on in an issue for everyone to know where we're coming from, then guess what? We have to be here till 11 o'clock tonight, going into, you know...
We can be here till 1:00 in the morning. I don't particularly care.
I just don't want you to say that there shouldn't be a long discussion. There could be a long discussion if we needed to.
Come on, I'm perfectly happy. But I would like to say, and the public should know over and over again, this has been on our website for a number of months. It's all there for people to look at. I encourage people to look at it because I thought it was a really good, strong study that has a lot to offer.
It is, and I will, I will echo that sentiment, the Housing Needs Assessment. If you go on our website, it talks, there's a, you can click on Studies and Research, and then there's Housing Studies, and it's one of the housing studies, and Part Four of that is the policy recommendations. And number eight of eight is ETPA, and he has a lot of really positive things to say about the benefits of ETPA. But his conclusion is that unless and until we have tried and failed in the first seven, we should not be considering implementing ETPA. I encourage everyone who has any interest in housing, whatever your position is, that you should read the report. It's very interesting. And whatever side you're on, there will be a lot of information that will support where you think you stand, and there's a lot of information to look at comprehensively. But Debbie, I think you wanted to say something, and three of us have spoken since you kind of...
It's okay. It's just really about the surveying techniques. So when we hire a company, they will have the credibility of being a reliable survey company, and I think that's really what we're looking for, is we want that reliability. When I have worked with them in the past, they can give us their recommendations, as Stuart suggested earlier, on how we best approach it for the information that we want that gives us statistically valid information. So I think that if I could, we will write up a scope of services that talks about, actually, both sides. Like, here's the primary that we want to survey, but what about this? And then ask the company that is the lead company to give us their recommendation. And before then, we sign that contract, we would talk that over with you to make sure you're comfortable, but...
So when you say both sides, what do you mean, both sides?
That, just the limited survey, and then the whole village survey. Because, because it's both ways. I mean, I'm hearing a propensity to go with the limited survey, but I think it's, it's worth discussing it with a company that does this for a living, to ask them, because we, like Stuart said, we're going to be planning for the defense. We want to have statistically valid survey from an independent company.
So let me, let me, because here's the thing...
We don't always know what that is.
Stuart, if we, based on case law, if we were to, say we were to do the whole village, right? And we paid for the whole village, we can't then turn around and say, okay, out of this survey, we're going to then look at these particular buildings.
Oh, yeah, actually, could you speak to that? Actually, we have to.
Just, just, just so you know, it's important because how they actually define it here. A declaration of emergency may be made as to any class of housing accommodations if the vacancy rate for the housing accommodations in such class within such municipality is not in excess of 5%. And a declaration of emergency may be made as to all housing accommodations if the vacancy rate for the housing accommodations within the municipality does not exceed 5%. So that's where the issue of the class comes in. You can actually break it down to 50 or more units. You can do, you could start with six and go up, but you can actually break it down to different classes. So it's not, it's not, even if you were to have a global study that included pre and post, if you looked at it and it was broken down and you saw that, well, for 1174 and earlier with, you know, 50 to 70 units, you saw a vacancy rate of 3.4%. Let's just say that as an example. You could declare that as your class for the emergency for the ETPA, and that becomes your class. So you can either do it municipal-wide or break it up by a class. That's, that's specific according to the statute.
And that's how we would ask them, to break up that data for us, so that you can have that discussion of those classes.
All right. But we just had like a 20-minute conversation, and the reason that we brought this back up is because we wanted to really fine-tune the RFP to pre-1974. That's what I would like the RFP to say, pre-1974. I'm not, I'm not interested in looking at other units outside of the ETB eligible buildings. I just want to, yeah. That was the purpose of continuing this new business.
I mean, Stuart, when we discussed this earlier, I mean, other, other communities have chosen to do that, that narrow scope of buildings, correct?
Others have, yeah. It has gone both ways, correct.
Right. I'm just saying that, that within the universe of studies that have been done around ETPA, different communities have decided to take different universes of housing.
Right. I should point out that the cases, the Long Beach case, for example, that I mentioned to you, that was a circumstance where ETPA had been put into effect by the city of Long Beach and was then challenged later because the unit owners were saying, it's not at 5%. Most of the cases that deal with when ETPA was started, those cases really date from the early 80s and the late 70s. So your universe of buildings is pretty much all pre-1174. What you do not have are a lot of cases that are from, let's say, 2010, where they're just starting ETPA. Because that, as you know, most of the, ETPA is generally, was only adopted by most municipalities, you know, certainly in the late 70s. So again, the Long Beach case is one of those cases where what happened is, the city of Long Beach had approved ETPA. And then unit owners in 100 or, 100 or greater units came in and said, well, here's our study. We're not at 5% any longer. We've done a vacancy study. And, and the city then came back and said, well, we disagree with you. We don't think that's the case. And the court, in fact, rejected it and then declared that ETPA was concluded. I just wanted to be clear that a lot of the cases that deal with ETPA in terms of the vacancy study date back more than 30 years because they are dated from about the time that ETPA came into, into effect.
Now, regardless of what exactly happened in Long Beach, you just said something that, and I feel like I've kind of parsed this and tried to make sense of it, especially with the classes and what rate, but, but you just said something that raised a question for me, and it's a legal question. Let's say, we go ahead and we do our study, whatever this, however we do the study, the, we decide, for example, we are going to enable ETPA for all units that are eligible, six, all building, with six units or more, all buildings with six units or more.
Yes.
Pre-1174. And that goes into effect. And meanwhile, building owners, let's say, with properties that are 50 units or more, we've set our class in this scenario as six units or more. The six units or more eligible units is 5% or less. Let's say it's 4% vacancy rate. We're not, we're not parsing it up any smaller than that. We're not making a bunch of classes. It's just one class, six units or more. Could a group of property owners come in, do their own study, and say, well, we're the property owners that have developments with 50 units or more? We did a vacancy study for this class that we've created of 50 units or more, and it's 5.5%. We're no longer ETPA. Can they, can they parse their own class that is a subset of the class that we establish?
That's similar to what was actually done in the Long Beach case.
Well, in court, just to be clear, they just can't organize and...
I mean, it sounds like...
You'd have to sue and be prevented.
It sounds like they did their own study of the same exact thing that they had studied.
Well, just to be clear, what happened in Long Beach, and I'll be happy to send it so you can see, because actually, it's, it's a series of cases. It started back in very early 2000s, and then there was a couple of appellate division decisions. But what we have is, the plaintiffs in the Long Beach case, this was called Executive Towers at Lido versus the city of Long Beach, they owned six apartment buildings, each contain 100 or more units, and they submitted proof to the city that for the period between January and May of 2003, the vacancy rate for those class of residential buildings exceeded 5%. And it goes on to say in the decision thereafter, in a report issued in August of 2003, the city found the vacancy rate for that class of residential buildings had not exceeded 5%. Now, it goes on to note that in August of 2003, the city of Long Beach enacted a section to their local ordinance in which they consolidated two ETPA classifications. They took, they used to have 60 to 99, and then 100 and more. What the city did was, they put it all into one, one classification. And they point out that the city, relying on the August 2003 report, passed a resolution which declared an ongoing housing emergency for the newly created class, and Mayor, this sort of goes to where you are, newly created class of buildings 60 or more. So they created 60 or more. That's what the city did. And these unit owners said, wait a minute, we're at 100 or more, and we don't have 5%. And in that case, what the city found, what the court found, was that in fact, for, for those unit owners of 100 or more, they had successfully shown that it was not a 5% vacancy rate for their class, and that as a result, the ETPA would not be applicable as to them. So could they, could they then challenge it? The answer is yes. So you could have a circumstance where you could be at six or more, and someone could come in with a study and say, wait a minute, I'm at, I have 50 or more. Okay? And I, and we would, there would be arguments on both sides, but our study says that at 50 or more, there is no, it is, it is not 5%. The city would be, the village in this case, would be forced to come back and defend its study, and may well have to come back and defend a particular study, you know, do that. So the answer is, it could, they could well be permitted to challenge.
Could you explain that again? Because it sounded like you said that the city first looked at a vacancy rate of 100 units or more.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so then the property owners, then the property owners came back and said, it's not 100 units, there wasn't a vacancy rate with 100 or more. And then what the city decided to do, said, okay, well, since we're being challenged on this, now we're going to expand the scope to 60, to 60 or more units. And then the court said that then the, the property owners were correct because their study of 100 units or more, there was no vacancy rate. But it seems like the city decided to change their scope.
At some point, the city, the city did.
Yeah.
That is, that is correct. As the court notes, in 2000 and 2001, so this precedes that, the city made separate declarations that a housing emergency existed with respect to the class of residential units at 60 to 99, and a class of residential units of 100 or more. So they had two specific classes.
Two separate.
Okay? The plaintiffs here, in the Long Beach case, owned units that were more than 100. And they provided a study that said that their vacancy rate was 5%. So to go back to the mayor's initial question, in the Long Beach case, you had two, the city had decided that there were two classes.
Okay.
Yeah. They took a 60 to 99 and 100-plus. The 100-plus owners challenged that. What the city did is not only say that your challenge is wrong, but they then said, okay, we're going to make one large class of 60 and greater. And the court said, you can't do that because their 100, in fact, is incorrect. So...
Okay. This is, this is a very, very interesting legal discussion and a lot of what-ifs. But right now, we are just going to put out an RFP to get, to solicit quotes from really worthy people to do a survey for us.
And Stuart, did you speak to the attorney in Mount Kisco that did, or anyone in Mount Kisco since they did their vacancy in 1993?
No. The, the person who is the village attorney is no longer there.
Okay.
And I did not reach out to the person who was one of the folks who challenged it, but that person I know is still around, but the village attorney is not.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
So...
So what I'm hearing is, pre-1174, six units or more.
And we'll have a chance to look at the draft, I guess, of the RFP at some point.
Sure.
Excellent.
I just have one more question. How long would the RFP be out for? Once it's, you know, available to the public for prospective vendors?
At least two weeks, if not 30 days.
Okay.
But I'll let you know on that, too.
Thank you, Debbie.
All right. Shall we move on to new business of the board? If any?
We have no, oh, we do, we have something. Go for it.
I am very sorry, but our very capable clerk reminded me that I wanted to announce that we were appointing Bob Ritchie to the zoning board of appeals.
Oh, right.
Bob was on the code board of appeals. He was looking to be more active. I talked it over with Sue Donnelly, who was the chairperson, and she didn't have any qualms about it. So please welcome him to the zoning board of appeals. He looks like he's very excited about getting involved in the...
That's good.
What is his term?
He...
Okay.
No, you know what? He's completing Jesus Lopez, and Jesus was just reappointed to a five-year term, so...
Starting January 1st, so January 2nd.
I didn't expect you to know everyone's terms, by the way.
Four years and 10 months, right? Okay. Four years and 10 months from now. Well, yes, and we welcome Bob. He is an electrician and a firefighter, and has a lot of institutional knowledge about our community, so he will provide a valuable insight on the zoning board of appeals. We're pleased to have him there.
So do we need to name him tonight? Is that what we're doing?
We don't. She appoints him.
I do.
She's just documenting it. We want to have it formally documented in a public record so that when somebody says, hey, when did Bob Ritchie join the ZBA? We can say...
And as we have a meeting of the ZBA on Tuesday, next Tuesday, Bonnie...
Yeah, it's good to let the public know before he shows up sitting on the ZBA. And since you mentioned the code board of appeals, that is a board that was recently reestablished as part of some of our updates to our code. Stuart, I don't know if you want to give a 10-second...
Sure.
...advertisement for what the, what the code board of appeals is, not just that we may need some new members, but we want it to be something that property owners are utilizing to prevent things from going to the court, perhaps.
Right. The, the idea of the code board of appeals is that when a property owner receives what we call an OTR, or an order to remedy, which if not complied with, would be turned into a court appearance ticket and a court summons, this would allow the individual who gets the OTR to appear before the code board of appeals and effectively plead their case at that early stage to explain either why they, they should not be getting it, or it should be modified in some way. The statute provides that while the, while the code board of appeals is considering that application, the individual, the owner, is not required to actually make the repairs that are required pursuant to the OTR unless it's a life safety issue as determined by the building inspector. So the code board of appeals, if, our hope would be that folks will come before that and there will be discussions, the building inspector is an ex officio member, and that if in fact, the code board of appeals agrees with the person making the application, then that OTR can be modified or can in fact be dismissed by the code board of appeals, which could conceivably avoid additional court process, but get the person in before the code board of appeals at a very early stage in the process. And that can apply to circumstances where you get a placard on your house that you have to have it vacated, where you have to make significant changes to your house. But it's with regard to specifically our demolition code and with regard to our housing maintenance code. It does not refer to state code violations or violations under the zoning code, which is Chapter 270. But, but if you have an issue with regard to your windows or things like that, and you get a violation, you can come before the code board of appeals, you can plead your case at that point. They may decide that in fact it's a legitimate violation and you have to actually get this taken care of, but they also have the opportunity to dismiss or modify. So that's where it becomes an important role and a function of, for both the, the, the building, the building inspector or the code enforcement officer would come there and explain why you got the violation. And again, it's all done before you have to go into court, which in many ways, we think is, is important because many of these OTRs do turn into appearance tickets, and if we can avoid having to turn them into appearance tickets and get them resolved at a much earlier stage, so much the better. So that's why we want to proceed with that.
We're all involved.
Right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome. Now, shall we move on to visitor recognition? If there's anyone here who's come to address the board, kindly state your name and your residential address, and you have three minutes to speak.
I will set my little timer. Give me a second.
Hi. My name is Annie Rodriguez. I'm sure you all know who I am.
Hey, Annie, you could pull it down just right in front of you. You'll be all set. It's okay. It's okay.
Hello. My name is Annie Rodriguez, and I'm sure you all know who I am. First of all, I just want to mention that I think the Village of Osning, the employees have done a great job in cleaning the streets and keeping it safe since the New Year's Eve. And believe me, I know, because I feed the two colonies twice a day, and I felt so much better going out there. And also, I wanted to also thank Chief Sylvester and his officers, because I work in a school as a monitor, and since this terrible thing that happened with the children, I've seen the police presence a lot more visible in Brookside. And usually, when you see them, it's like, "Oh, God, it's a lockdown. It's a lockout." But it's not. They're just walking around, and I know it makes me feel comfortable, and I know it makes a lot of other people in the school feel comfortable. So, I just wanted to thank the chief and his officers, and also the village. And basically, I'm just here to mention something that CPC, which is Cat Protection Council, is organizing an educational forum about community cats and its trap, neuter, and return program for the Village of Osning. And we're planning the event for the evening of March 15th. The location still needs to be, great, yes, because I believe that someone emailed Mr. Kahane two handouts, and all that information will be on there. I think the location still needs to be determined. And Dr. Sabrina Temperman will be speaking, which will have a lot of information, which will be very educational regarding this issue. And also, the other handout, I believe you got, is how to tell the difference between a feral and straight cat. Wonderful. And basically, that's all. We just wanted to, you know, inform you all. And again, really, it's great, and I'm sure they'll do a great job following tomorrow because we're expecting a heck of a storm. Thank you again. Thank you.
Hey, Annie. Annie, if you need help in finding a space for your meeting, because I see that the location is to be announced, just, you know, shoot me an email.
I definitely will. Thank you.
No problem.
Is there anyone else who's come to address the board? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. I'm Lottie Cohn. I live in the Village of Osning.
Could you repeat your name again for me, please?
My name is Lottie Cohn.
Thank you. Welcome.
And we're just here to say, dear Village of Osning Board of Trustees, we are here on behalf of the thousands of Osning residents who are at risk of displacement amidst rising housing costs in our village. We are encouraged by the additional step forward you have taken this evening on the vacancy study. We plan to continue to work with you to ensure that the study is implemented swiftly and effectively. Rent stabilization has already helped create stability for families in 19 communities in Westchester. We are encouraged by the step forward to stabilize rents in the Village of Osning. Sincerely, all of us here, community voices heard, members and allies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who's come to address, bless you, to address the board? Yes.
Sure.
Before I start, am I jumping ahead because this is reference to the Sunshine Home?
This, you have three minutes to discuss any item of interest to the public good.
Fantastic. My name is Violet Benny, Cedar Lane. I live on Cedar Lane. And I love living on Cedar Lane, and I didn't, I left the city kicking and screaming almost 25 years ago. And I wouldn't want to live anywhere else right now. It's a beautiful place. Osning is getting so hip. The whole Hudson Valley is just changing in a terrific way, and it's a really great place to live, and a lot of people want to live here, and that's terrific. However, for the past 25 years, I've spent a lot of money on taxes, a lot of money on taxes. And I'm not complaining about it. I've been real ignorant. I've just paid and lived, and everything's been terrific. And now, all of a sudden, this beautiful little hamlet that I live in is going to be destroyed by a variance requested by the Sunshine Home. Now, to me, because I've been going to all these meetings to fight this, I've learned about variances at Newcastle, which I didn't find the board as warm and fuzzy as I do for you people, and we're leaving that off the record. However, really didn't. However...
Hey, I'm sorry.
I bet their reputation precedes them.
All right. All right. I paused it for a moment. Now, you can go back.
Okay. Thank you. But I learned about someone who just wanted a variance. She wanted to build a small little kitchen, a professional kitchen, to teach cooking classes and have a few people cook. And her neighbor wanted to make sure there were some trees put in, and it wasn't too close to the property line. That was reasonable. That made sense. To put in my neighborhood, near the Cedar Lane Dog Park, this beautiful neighborhood, a hospital the size of a Walmart is inexcusable. That's not a variance. That's a total rezoning, a total expletive deleted rezoning. We really, it's Newcastle postal, post office or town limitations.
Town of Newcastle.
Right. Thank you. That was what I meant. It's, but it's my property values, my neighbor's water, my neighborhood for 25 years that's going to be ruined, that's going to have a hospital, how am I doing? It's going to have a hospital that is way too big with children who are in a horrible state. It's very, very unfortunate, and because of that, each and every one of them has to have an ambulance in case Indian Point goes off. So, where is all that going to go? Plus, most of them are on oxygen. My neighbor, we had a small fire. My neighbor's garage and a beautiful antique car were built. Had we not had the wet circumstances that we did this summer, had there been a drought, it could have ended up like California. Even with the fire department coming, it was a difficult struggle to put that fire out. Now, this facility has children on oxygen in the middle of the woods. This isn't smart. This isn't sensible. If that place blows, not only are all these children gone and the facility gone, but the whole area is at risk. This is a really dangerous thing and stuff I didn't think about till I started having to go to these meetings to fight for this. I just want to pay my taxes and have a nice little happy life. I'm on the wrong side of 50. I don't have that much time left. Come on. Work with me. Please help us out.
Thank you. We hear you, and I saw you turn your microphone on, Deputy Mayor Codman. Did you want to comment on this?
I am not a fan of the development. And the reason I'm not a fan of it is because, and I'm not sure I've really fully stated this publicly, but, you know, I believe that the lack of a full environmental impact statement not being done by the town of Newcastle was a mistake, and it's currently being litigated. I'm sure you're aware of that. You know, as a village, personally, I'm concerned. I'm deeply concerned, and I've shared that with my colleagues. You know, there's also the notion of, you know, of jurisdictional issues, and frankly, we don't have any jurisdictional power related to these variances that have been handed out. And we, as, myself, as a elected official, you know, I would be unhappy if somebody from another jurisdiction came in and told me what to do. But at the end of the day, I think there's still some more issues to resolve. My understanding is there's a series of other ZBA events coming up. I don't know, I believe Council Kahane has made me aware of some things. But I want you to know that, for myself, I'm following it very closely. I think it's defective because there wasn't a full environmental impact statement performed. And I think there's going to be a consequence to that. I don't know what that's going to be, but, you know, that's my opinion, and that's all I can tell you, and that, myself, I'm deeply concerned about it.
You know, and I don't mean to just speak self...
We actually, it's not a conversational debate right now, but we did absolutely hear you, and I think we can chime in a little bit more just to, because you've brought up some questions, and I want people who are watching to understand what the jurisdiction is and what the village's role in this process has been. Were you leaning forward that you wanted to say something?
No, you know, I'm in agreement with John. I mean, I'm sort of disgusted with the lack of how another municipality has allowed something to go on and on against the objections of its own residents. You know, these kind of structures are so large, they don't sit within a border. You know, things will end up happening, I think, environmentally, that we will then look back and say, "Somebody should have stopped that from happening," and it'll be too late. It'll be too late. The chopping down of trees, the, I mean, all of the environmental issues that we see around the country, it's always too late by the time bad things happen. And each time, we say, "We've got to make some of these predictions." Citizens stood up. People objected. So, I echo what John is saying, and it is not within our jurisdiction, but I have no doubt that it will negatively affect people that live in our community.
Did you want to comment?
Yes. I, as well, am very concerned with the whole project, and I think that, at the government level, from county to state to federal, that attention should be also given to your officials at those levels to really look at the project. Unfortunately, I really wish that this board can do more, but we just can't, and we can go into that, you know, but I do hear you, and I do wish that we actually had the ability to change or ask for the right studies, environmental, you know, and back statement in particular to be done. Unfortunately, we don't. And it's very, it's right, it's very close to the town, you know, and village. It's part of our community, that area, even though it's not, you know, we're one community, right? So, and what I would encourage you from my activist side is keep fighting, get loud. I know it's not just you, but, you know, get in the way, and, you know, and contact your county, state, and federal reps to get involved, and also see what their role has been up to this point, and how they could step in. But thank you for coming. I really, thank you.
I want to also offer a little bit of context, and the role that the village has played, and that is appropriate for the village. Now, it sounds like you live in the town of Osning, and there are folks who live in the town of Osning that are all in that neighborhood and are very much impacted. And as you said, Sunshine itself has a mailing address that's Osning, but it's technically in the town of Newcastle, so it's been in the town of Newcastle Land Use Boards that are overseeing this development process. So, neither the town of Osning, which is not us, although I believe they are actually discussing some of this tonight at their work session at the other building, so tune into...
Okay. No, I'm in the wrong place. No one told me I'm in the wrong place. I was told 16 Croton Ave for this meeting.
What their work sessions usually are, but their work session right now is at the town.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry I took the time. I'm sorry I bothered you with this.
No, it's actually relevant, because I want to, I do want to tell you that the village has played a role, because it's not just that our friends and neighbors live there, and we work closely with the town. One of our water sources, our chief water source, the Indian Brook Water Reservoir, is on the adjacent property about 1,500 feet downhill from the proposed development.
At one point, yeah.
For that reason, we have been involved in this. Not only have we been involved as a term of art that is not appropriate, but we have been monitoring this. We have been following it. We have actually weighed in with legal documents, and Stuart can speak to that in a moment. I just want you to know, we are particularly aware of it because while our reservoir is actually in the town of Osning, it is the responsibility of the Village of Osning. It's a Village of Osning managed water department. We provide safe, reliable drinking water to everybody in the unincorporated town of Osning and the Village of Osning that's on our water system. And so, it is incredibly important to us that our water source is safe and preserved. And for that reason, we have weighed in on a number of occasions because we are concerned about the fact that the way that this process was undertaken is not the way we would have done it in Osning. We would have, for the magnitude of this development, we would have required a full environmental impact study, and that was not done in this case, and that's concerning. Have there been studies that have been done? Yes. And the developer can tell you that there have been a whole, long list of studies, but it's not the process that we typically would demand of a proposed development, and that is very unfortunate and leaves us, certainly is open to questions about whether all of the information has been researched and analyzed appropriately. But Stuart, could you just explain what are, there have been particular moments during these court cases where we have provided material?
The village has provided material there. There is a pending Article 78 that was brought against the Newcastle zoning board. That is pending right now. I learned last week that this actually was a second action recently commenced against the Newcastle Planning Board for some of the permits that it has issued. That is in its very early stages, and I have asked the attorneys for the petitioners in that case to keep me up to date as to what the filings are and what the filing deadlines are. Those have not yet been set. But neither of those Article 78s have been decided yet, and the main argument, as has been brought up by the board members, is that there was not a full environmental study, that even though it was classified for purposes of the law as a type 1 action, the determination was that it would not have a significant environmental impact. And as such, no environmental impact statement was required. That has raised numerous eyebrows and is one of the things that is the main issue that has been challenged and awaits a determination from the court.
I don't know what's going on down at the town board meeting, but it's at 75, no, 78, 670...
86, 88 Spring Street.
Thank you. Thank you. 86, 88 Spring Street.
Courthouse next to the police.
Yes. They may still be going on.
Yeah, you could still make two, you can make two meetings.
I'm spreading the word. I'm spreading the word.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You've got the great work.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, ma'am. I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.